This conference will now be recorded.
We're good. Oh. Comes again.
You don't have to stand. I mean, you don't have to get and sit back down again. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. I'd like to call the regular January 17th, 2023, council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. All right, so the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
Don't have any.
If not, I'll move to accept the agenda as written. So moved. Is there a second?
A second?
Second is by Counselor Wagner. I'm getting there. It's been a while.
It has been.
So would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Are there any presentation? Are there any presentations? Okay, none. Mayor's report. For those of you who are not aware, four years ago, I started a citizen recognition Citizen of the Month Award. And I did it for, oh, maybe six months, and then the council came to me and said, we'd like to participate. And I said, that'd be great. And it actually has worked out really well over the last four years, I think. And the reason why I think it's wonderful that the council participates is it gives them a stake in the community and they can meet the people more than just myself and my picks. So I think, and we do it every second council meeting of the month, which is now. And I believe Counselor Norman had the duty this month, so I'll turn it over.
Last month, but it got delayed until this month.
Right. Anyway, I'll turn it over to Counselor Norman.
Yes. So I picked Larry Benardi. I've known him since I was a little kid. He's a longtime resident, his whole life here, too. Remember him delivering stove oil and fixing the furnaces and everything. And as time went on, he got to be a pretty good handyman around the community. And then here lately, he's been doing quite a bit for the senior citizens, keeping them taken care of and organized. So I present this to Larry Benardi. Okay. There's one with the seal amongst us, Stephanie?
Yeah, one's for us.
Okay.
Because.
I don't know what we're supposed to do here tonight, but I told them 7:30.
Oh.
Uh-oh.
Sure, days went dead. I don't know what's going on.
They need to take our picture, Larry, with your nice reward in front of you. Turn around here, because that will get it so they can get you in the local paper, you know, and they want to make you more famous. Thank you. Appreciate all your help.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Larry. Okay, council committee meeting reports. I attended, I have one. I attended the senior board meeting last Friday. And ultimately, short meeting, not a lot of new business. So I don't really have much to report. They did get the aisles cleared at the thrift store, and so that's running a little smoother down there for people to walk through. See, the next meeting's the 14th, Valentine's Day, I believe. They did have an issue with the gutter leaking, and that's been brought to our attention, so we're addressing it right now. So trying to get that fixed. That's about all I have to report on that. Any other committee meeting reports? No. Moving right into topics on the floor. Evidently, we have one.
I have one.
Okay.
From Norman regarding law enforcement.
Okay.
I have to stand here. I'm Kimberly Norman, local Vernon resident. My question concern for everyone is, we had a call roughly two weeks ago, and apparently there's a procedure in place so if other departments come into town, they have to go through like a process and get approval. I want answers to why my lives and four other lives, and then became three other additional lives, were on the line for 45 minutes until law enforcement arrived to get us out of a very serious predicament. As a first responder, that's the last thing I want to happen when I go to a house to save someone's life. But for the first time in Vernonia, I thought I was gonna die. And it was the longest 45 minutes of my life, waiting to hear that next set of sirens come in and to find out that there was a whole process that has to happen. I'm sorry, but if we do a, you know, as a movie say, a May Day call, it should be no. Anyone being able to say yes or no, someone else can come in. Every available resource should be allowed to come in the city and protect us. So I want to know why it took so long and why there's that process in place. Because had that gone the way it could have gone, we would have no ambulance service and no volunteer ambulance association at the moment, and half of our fire staff would have copied it.
Not sure we could address that right here in this segment of our meeting. But we can surely get back to you on that in the near future.
Okay.
I don't know.
I mean, I think I value my life quite a bit, and it sucks that, like, going to save people's lives, that I know there's hazards, but this particular resident was a known violent person that moved into our community. The address should have been flagged, so we would have known going into it that our lives would have been online. The person who moved to the area came from another area and was, had given Vernonia law enforcement a heads up about this to be a law enforcement two-car minimum response. So to send ducks in there for Vernonia Police Department to know that information and not flag that address, who takes liability of our deaths? There was weapons, knives, guns. The man's hand was at my throat. So I don't want, like, this to get table forever. I'd like some very quick responses on it.
Yeah.
So what, how much time do you, do you want us to get with Kim tomorrow?
What would be the appropriate process for this? So this should go, I presume, to the police department for clarification of the process? So that you, and is that us, or is that you, who should make the response and let them know?
Well, I guess it depends on if you guys want to know what the deal was, that if there was a deal that led to that first, before I talk to Kim? Or if you would just like the police department and myself to talk to Kim with whatever we find? Up to you guys. If you want, if you would like a heads up first, then that's fine. You just got to tell me when.
I don't think we need to.
Yeah. I think I kind of view this as a complaint process that we have. Make them come and file a complaint. I mean, basically, I would think it is that such, and that should spur that process. I mean, I'd like to be back grounded on this eventually.
Sure.
This is all.
Okay.
We can, that our process is in place would be able to address this issue.
Yep.
Keep it from happening again.
I agree with you. I would like to hear back on it as a council, but I don't think that that needs to hold up getting answers to Kimberly.
Okay.
If you'd like to contact our office tomorrow afternoon?
Yeah, I can come down.
There's a chance in the morning.
Figure it out. Hopefully, some changes can happen.
Yeah.
That situation, so.
Sure.
I understand there's, why there's that situation in place, but when we're calling for a May Day, it shouldn't, that shouldn't be part of that.
Thank you.
Consent agenda for acceptance. Library board meeting minutes for November 2022.
I move to accept the consent agenda for acceptance.
I'll second that. And motions are made to accept the meeting minutes and second it. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Set agenda for approval. City council meeting minutes for January 3rd, 2023.
I have one. I have one.
All right, real quick, Therese. There was one edit that was brought to my attention on the second page of the minutes that didn't reflect what counselor made the motion. That was Counselor Wagner.
Under what section?
B, Fortuna.
Good progress.
At the top.
That was the same one I had.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, any other questions or additions?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Second. And second, would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, any unfinished business tonight?
No.
Okay. Moving into new business. Staff report. Work session scheduling on page seven.
Okay, this report's brought to my hearing. You guys brought your, I guess that you are definitely not available. Therese, do you want to start? Maybe not.
Did we lose her?
There still shows her out there. Now she's. Might be back. Okay, Donald, you said you were available anytime, right? Susan?
Can you come back to?
Uh, Cherise? Nope.
What day are we talking about?
Any of these days.
Oh.
March. Days where you not available.
I'm not. The 3rd of February. The Friday.
Okay. And that's it for February, March, besides that?
I am not the 9th of February. Let me get March.
I'm not available on the 7th.
7th of February?
Correct. And on March, also the 7th.
All the other days are okay?
Um, I can't do the 18th, 19th, 25th, or 26th during the day, but I doubt you were going to propose that.
On the weekends?
No, in the day.
During the day on those two weekends, until I would be back in town around 4:00 PM.
Yeah, okay. We won't do it the weekends.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm waiting.
Hell's open. Susan for March?
I'm fine, except it's already, the 9th is already off, so I'm just double checking, but yeah, everything's okay, other than that.
So my proposal is February the 13th at 6:30.
That's fine for me.
You don't go to WACCA, right?
No.
Okay. Making sure.
February 13th?
Yep.
6:30?
Yep.
Okay.
Well done, everyone.
Council rules. Council roll.
Thank you for bringing all your availability.
Yes. This is from the departments.
So I'll just go over my report. So I am going to be attending the Parks meeting on the 25th, next Wednesday, to start our discussions on the plans for the Old Mill Wagon Wheel Campground. I don't know what name we're calling it, but that's the subject. ODOT's ramp. So we found out when we were on our work session that ODOT came without notifying us and failed Spencer, partly for needing a curb, because the citizens are driving over the ramp, because the street's so narrow. So that was their request on Spencer. On Umatilla, they didn't even inspect it because the barricades were there. They didn't tell us they were coming, so what do you do? And then on River, their first, they had had a finding, not really a failure, but the, where the ramp stopped and the asphalt started, there was a little gap, so we put cold patch and tamped it down. The inspector took her boot and tried to scrape it up and got some cold patch up, so she tried to fail that, even though their inspection area doesn't go past the ramp. So we contacted the head of the region, Scott Nelson, and he requested that he wanted to have a meeting with his staff ahead of having a meeting with all of us, because he felt like they would be in a defensive position. So we're waiting for him to get back to us on when we can meet as a group and kind of understand really what they're doing. This will be the fifth time that they've failed them. And we don't kind of understand, if we all have the same goal, that people with disabilities or accessibility issues can use the sidewalk and the curb stops and the ramps, what are we doing at this point? So that's where we're at with that. We're hoping that we have our meeting this week. Robert, the engineer, will be in on all those meetings. So I'm still working with West Oregon Electric and Next Level about the relocation of the power. Their first pushback to me was, well, we just want to release it from the back wall and put it on posts. And I'm like, no, we don't know what that grandstands is going to do when it comes down. We don't know where their equipment will need to access the demolition site, so we really need it relocated once and done. So we're meeting again this week on that. We do have, at least so far, three companies all within kind of our area that are interested in bidding the project. So we're moving along on the bid docs, but my next step will be JR, Counselor Allen is, was going to get a grade-all to lift the grandstands while the scaffolding company takes their scaffolding out. That's the way you do it. You just get a heavy-duty grade-all and hold the edge up, and then slowly lower it, and it might come down all the way. The other thing that we have to do ahead of the scaffolding coming down is we're going to be, we want to time it right, because we're going to be removing the few items in there, and then we're going to be cutting the logger out to kind of keep it, whether the school does something with it or boosters, just we don't want it to be crunched into a million pieces and then the community be upset by that, so. But we need to time it right, because it's going to leave a big gaping hole, which is going to attract a lot of the kids in the area to start investigating and, you know, who knows what? So we're still working on that. I have not yet gotten my follow-up meeting information from the two individuals that are helping us with decommissioning the old dump, but I'll let you guys know once I have that follow-up meeting. Arbitration, we did submit final testimony on January 9th. And then, as I stated in previous meetings, the arbitrator, according to the CBA, has 30 days to give us a decision, but according to the state, they don't really have a timeline. Both parties have said we would like it expedited, the decision, but we're just kind of wait and see. And then upcoming meetings, you guys do have a scheduled work session for January 23rd at 6:30, and that's the presentation from the Department of Justice on the tracking system that statewide is going in for discriminative discrimination and activities that are just, that are reported based on discrimination, based on race or gender identity. Do you guys have other questions for me?
Yeah. So Parkers are concrete contractors.
Yep.
And I, they're the ones that barricade the tape and everything up there. I can kind of see a failure right there. We need one of our crew to kind of work. So much on the project, being in town, to put the barricade and the tape up for the concrete to set, and then after a day or two, it's fine, and how are those Parker's barricades and stuff, or?
You know, I'd have to check, Dale, but we did, as Public Works, talk about that, that, you know, should we have another windstorm or something, and it looks disheveled at minimum, put them back up the way they were configured originally, move the buckets. That's, that was to keep people from walking on it. If those are no longer necessary, move them to public workshop and just wait until Parker meets them back or something like that.
Because I was thinking, you know, if you talk to Parker, they're probably saying, okay, give it two or three days, and then you can pull this stuff back. If it's our barricade, stack them over here for us.
Yeah.
I drove by it tonight, and it's still in the same condition of what when the inspector came by.
Weird, because the barricades did go up, so maybe we just need them. Okay.
Way inland.
We'll just get them. We'll just clear it all, and then, yeah.
So that would maybe, it would have helped us in this.
Yeah, she said if there's any, in her email, the inspector said if there's any barricades, anything, she will not inspect. So we should have had, had we known, we would have gone and broomed it, we would have everything, we would have filled the dirt to the right level. But Public Works has a lot of heartburn from having filled the dirt to the level of planting and then had to rip it out multiple times. So they need to get over that and just do it.
So on Spencer, does that look like it's fixable? It's just a curb, or?
Well, that's the thing, is her report wasn't really specific, so that's why we're having the meeting and why we like to be on site, is to say, this six-inch area isn't meeting the slope is one thing, but to fail it and for us not to have detail of, is it a total failure, like we're jackhammering the whole thing? Or is it a grinding, you know, and then it will suffice, we're just kind of stuck. So we gotta, he was, Scott did relay to us that he was very disappointed that no one notified us, that no one, you know, said we're going to come inspect, that the areas outside the inspection specifications were now being inspected. He did not exactly understand what was the driving factors behind all that, so.
And just to follow up on, on the whole sidewalk issue and the funding that we've lost over the last two years now, Josette and I are going to attend the meeting in March.
The Northwest Act?
Right. And have a discussion with that group, and ODOT will be there.
Yeah.
So we haven't put it to bed yet. Go ahead.
I don't know if you guys accept outside input or what's that situation, but I did all the ADA compliance at the remodel. So if you'd like, help me with that.
It seems like it's super stringent, because they got sued. I mean, we'd be better off to build a jig and pour it upside down with the right slopes and then flip it. I mean, that's where we're at, because it's so crazy. They want a broom finish, but they want no, yeah.
I dealt with the federal government on the ADA complaints.
Yeah. That'd be awesome.
You can't have it open to public until it's been passed from inspection.
Right.
So you have to have barricades.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Because if you trip it, if you, if someone trips on the trip hazard. Yeah. So we'll go freshen it up and make it look nice again.
Yeah, I'm willing to help.
Okay. That'd be awesome.
Everything they used.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not the only community that's had.
No.
Oh, no, it wasn't.
I mean, it's statewide.
Right. Well, and up there, the ground was just too steep to meet the 2%.
Yeah.
It was not physically possible.
Yeah.
So it's all about verbiage to get them to actually go.
Mayor, could I propose that we do a redo of the Citizen of the Month?
Absolutely.
Well, I'll be in defense of your mom. She wasn't feeling good that day. Like you tell us.
We could absolutely.
100% better, but yes, we can do a redo.
Absolutely.
Is there anybody else coming?
No.
Do that.
I think they're here.
You probably forgot already.
That's mean.
Counselor Norman, I'll turn it over to you.
So I was councillor to make somebody Citizen of the Month for January, and I picked Larry Benardi. I've known him since I was a kid. He's been here all his life, too. And always remember him bringing oil for the oil furnace, coming and fixing the furnace, and he come be a pretty good handyman around the community, and then he's helped out a whole bunch with the senior citizens building and keeping it going, so I made him Citizen of the Month for this month.
I might add a little things to it. Larry was on the fire department for 15.
Oh, yeah.
And he also taught understanding refrigerators.
Yeah.
Yes.
He's a good guy.
And he fixed, he fixed a lot of refrigerators, washing machines.
A lot of things.
Yeah.
He already got his certificates.
Well, you can come shake again. Donald will, Donald will redo it.
I'll come back to you in that back corner.
There you go.
There you go. Get the whole family in the shop.
Yeah, there you go. I'll get the whole family in the shop for the.
Nice you're here, it is.
That's.
Good idea.
Set up straight, kids.
You're welcome.
Okay. Everyone look this way. It's going to be in the paper.
Okay.
I'll just stiffen it up.
Oh, it fell down.
Oh, no.
There, take.
Perfect. Thank you.
There we go.
Again, well deserved.
Okay, any other questions or items for Josette? Okay, is there any course?
Any questions from the floor?
Any correspondence?
Not informed.
And?
Okay. Items from the mayor and cons. Items from the mayor and counselors.
Did anybody else get that survey from DEQ on their quality monitor?
No.
No? Wow. I got one.
It's via email?
Yeah. Maybe I should look at it.
Your email?
An email.
Huh.
Yeah. So they. Yeah, so they.
I received it.
I freeze it also.
They had funding for 20 more, I can't remember what they called it, it was air monitoring station. Mainly around small particle particulates, smoke. And, you know, when we've had the forest fires and have gotten smoke, if anybody's ever went online and looked, there's not much information over in our area. It's, you're relying either for stations around Portland or down in the Hillsboro area or Longview. Actually, Longview is probably the most representative of us, which it isn't at times, so. It was interesting because I, I went through doing a bunch of dropdown boxes and, and they said they had a list of 30 sites that they wanted to put a station in, but they only had the funding for 20, but Vernonia was one of them.
Oh.
They had, you could choose three choices. I just chose Vernonia all three times.
There you go.
Maybe it's right choice, choice voting, so I figured, you know, stacked the deck a little, so. So anyhow, it just, it'd be interesting to see, and I put you down as a contact.
Okay, cool.
Probably at the water plant, probably be a logical place.
Yeah.
Depending on the requirements. So.
Sure.
The high school has to report air quality for outside sporting events, so that might be in the bill.
Oh.
I would say a requirement that determines this year.
And that's a potential site, too. This is, I thought about that, but.
Yeah.
So.
Because right now we're on a general bill bracket because we don't have one on site.
Oh.
Including all Portland's reasons.
Okay.
Even though we moved away from the Sorel Lagoon?
You know, this would have played an important role because they canceled a track meet, I think it was, because of it, and they were using outside information. That track meet could have occurred if we'd have had timely information. We were getting blowed out. And.
So I didn't get it, so could you forward me the email soon so I can?
I can do.
Okay.
Any other items? Counselor Ash, do you have anything?
Um, just that I will, I have a schedule conflict for the work session next Monday to deliver a presentation, but I will be listening to the recording right afterwards, as soon as it's on, uh, in the website.
Okay. I've got two things. I went and picked up cemetery gates over from Steve's Machinery, straightened out one major dent in one of the gates and brought them back, and, and so those are evidently getting sandblasted and powder coated, too. That'll be nice to get those back up pretty soon. Also, I attended the, the town hall last Monday night, and I just want to make some comments publicly that I thought it was an excellent meeting, and all three commissioners were there, and Metro West was there, their lead representative Jake, and very informative meeting for, for me anyway, and I think most of the people there. And I was actually, when I left home, I was proud to be from Vernonia because we all came together and a lot of questions were answered about the ALS and, and the biggest thing I took away from that is a nationwide shortage of paramedics, and I want to publicly thank you for what you do, and just like the other night, the situation that you were faced with, I mean, it's not easy, and I want to thank you for your service and, and I was proud of our community, so. That's all I have.
I was wondering if either council or the city could send a big thank you to Metro West with what they've done in the past?
Sure. I mean, I can draft something you guys can all sign, or I can send one?
Yeah, I think, come in and get us a great service. Whether they stay or not, I think, I can't remember how many years it has been, but.
Yeah.
I think we need to recognize them.
I can get you guys some good contact information to go back and gather Jake.
Okay, good.
Good.
So do you guys want me to draft something that you all sign as council, or would you like me to, yes, you would like it?
That would be my preference.
Okay. So bring it to your meeting on Monday, and you can sign it? The work session, okay?
Is that a good view?
Yes.
Can I just pop in early next week?
Yeah, yeah, I'll have it ready.
Okay, I'll come in one day. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Ready for an action item summary?
Okay, so staff is going to get together and go over the incident that Ms. Norman mentioned, and then contact her, and then also follow up with what resulted from all of that discussion and any changes that are being made to council at your next meeting. We're going to refresh the barricade situation. Did I miss something? You're, you're, I know your face. What would you like me if?
Do play poker really well, but this is.
Just not against me?
Just not. I, I think the caveat to that would be whatever information that can be shared as opposed to.
Oh, no.
Being us to be able to hear all of it, because I know there are some things they're just not going to share.
Yeah, but I just mean, I'll report back to you the results of what comes out of it, and then if you guys have further questions, you can always talk to Carnehan individually. We're going to refresh the barricade situation at Klatzup, so it's all appropriate. Counselor Webb's going to send me the DEQ funding for the air monitoring, and then I'll review that and then probably talk to Mr. Hellman and see if that's something jointly, because I think a letter of support, sometimes with those funding things, the more agencies you have playing into the ask, the more likely you are to get funded and a station put. And then we'll be, staff will be bringing a letter thanking Metro West for their years of service to the next meeting of council on the 23rd for council signature, in which Counselor Ash will be absent, but she will sign it before she goes to her presentation.
Good.
And Dale, I do have order the sleeves on here, but that wasn't a council action.
No.
Anything else that I missed or?
Don't think so.
Okay.
Again, I'd like to congratulate Larry and, and for all you've done for, and continue to do for our community, and it's really nice to have your family here, and and this is probably one of the shortest council meetings that I've ever had. Normally, we do our recognition at the beginning of the meeting and my report, and so shortly after that, the, the family and, and recipients use the exit, and then we're, we're here another two hours, but I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:40 PM.
The short end?